Um, we have. I think it was, wasn't there? The packages necessary now?
Oh, towards the round of that table.
Thank you.
We didn't touch mine as you did.
I did.
I'd like to call a meeting of the downtown water and sewer commissioners. At five thirty-two on October thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, and we're all here.
Okay, thank you. So it looks like first on the agenda is discussion on the indirect cost allocation plan for the Water Sewer Enterprise Fund. So I think this just kind of discussed the current allocation and potentially changing that allocation going forward. So I think Kim passed out the most recent and kind of historic allocations as they've been over the years since it was created. So I guess I don't know who wants to start on this, and I guess Water Sewer Commission, you guys want to start off and what you want from this and what the new allocation you're looking for?
We want to, we feel that we need to have our indirect costs lower down as compared to what it has been. We should probably refer to the Finance Committee because they sent us a letter about what they think.
Okay.
Yeah, our feeling is that most of the categories by which we allocate the indirect costs are done fairly. Uh, the one uh group of costs which we feel are done unfairly would be the ones that are allocated according to the percent of the current year budget. So that includes town audit, town treasurer, management info systems, uh general insurances, and general administration. I guess that's it. Uh, the reason for that is that if you only look at the, as if you look at the full budget of the Water and Sewer Commission, the vast majority of that is passed through from the customer to the supplier. So about, I think it was like almost nine hundred and fifty thousand of your budget is not really costing the town anything in terms of administering it. At, at least um for those types of costs that are calculated using the budget. So our proposal would be to exclude the portion of your budget that goes to pay for sewage disposal and uh water supply from the calculation. So your indirect costs for those um, what's it, five items? Would be based on, on a current budget of about two hundred thousand instead of one point one million. Uh, so it would reduce your indirect costs from around a hundred thousand to around seventy-five thousand using rough numbers.
Okay.
So that's a question. Is it a requirement to charge, is it a requirement to charge Enterprise Fund indirect costs? Or is it, I know it's generally accepted accounting principle to do that, but is it a requirement?
I'll have to refer to Kim on that one. Do you know if it's a requirement by any chance, or does anyone else? No, I'm not sure. Don't have a lot of experience with enterprise funds except for this one, so.
So are you, if you're asking if it's in the statute, um, I don't have the statute in front of me, so I do not believe that it is in statute, but it is in the guidance that's been published by the Department of Homeland.
Right, that's generally accepted. You always allocate costs before you can, indirect costs.
No, it's specific to enterprise.
Well, yeah, because Enterprise Fund is a separate type of, you're allocating all the indirect costs to all the other departments. In effect, in effect, because you have in central, localized expenditures.
Yes, we don't go through the formal process of calculating it by department.
And the only reason why you break this up is because this is an enterprise fund.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I know that, and I just wondered if it's a requirement to do that.
Something we definitely, we can look into. Uh, so that seems like it'll be, you know, twenty-five thousand dollar estimated production in the allocation overall. What do you guys feel about that as a, you know?
Well, it's a good starting point. You know, that's, you know, we don't feel that that's a lot of money to do, you know. We just, we just feel that we're getting overcharged for most everything.
The allocations that Kim is using is, they're perfectly sound calculations and the finance, we know that they're perfectly sound calculations. It, it's costing us quite a bit of money that we, that we pass on to the customers. And one of the things that, I, I have to always bring this up because this is, this is the truth of the matter. Very few of our customers requested water. That's my concern. It's been my concern since I was a selectman, alright? And that's just how I feel, and that, that's never going to change. But, you know, I mean, so we're passing on, so we drop it down, so it's going to bring our indirect costs to seventy, seventy-five thousand? Seventy-four thousand, six sixty-nine. Okay, so we're still going to pass that along. It was interesting when you had, the last meeting we had, we had the attorney here, uh, who was on the phone, and he said something very important. That, you know, if we have a deficit, the town has to pick it up in this year. You can only increase your water rates so much before you have rebellion from the water customers. But we've already had two increases this year.
The increases were from Fall River to you, right?
Yeah, we passed one, we have to pass some more. That's all our increases are.
No, no, I just wanted to make that clear.
And New Bedford. Actually, Fall River hasn't given us the increase yet this year. New Bedford, we've already changed the rates for New Bedford, in fact, of October, October first, we were hanging on to try to get Fall River this new rate, but then the city council still hasn't said what it's going to be. So we're going to have to come up with another increase.
Yeah, the, the advantage of this proposal that we're putting forth is that it insulates the indirect costs from those rate increases from Fall River and New Bedford. So if they raise their water rates, your indirect costs would not respond to that increase.
Well, I understand that.
Yeah.
But the other thing is, we only have less than seven hundred customers, you know, and, and the thing, when you're, when you're an enterprise fund, that's for like the big cities that have thousands of customers, and it's easy to do. We only have seven hun, a little less than seven hundred, or seven hundred and twelve, or something like.
There's under seven hundred. There's seven hundred meetings, but there's a lot of six hundred and seven customers.
Yeah.
But what, what percentage of the bill to the customer typically is for the water itself versus the other fees, the indirect fees?
Well, I have to go back and calculate that, George. I have no idea without calculation.
But is it the majority or minority?
It's, no, the, in my opinion, without looking at it, the cost of the water is the biggest figure. But all the other costs add on to that, that rate. And as, listen, you guys negotiate contracts with the employees, don't you? Well, guess what? It's going to cost us more once you, when you sign these contracts. Our charges are going to be higher, so that, that's going to force us to raise our rates even over above what the city of Fall River or the city of New Bedford charges us.
Right, because you have the water cost plus your operational cost.
Right, so when you negotiate a contract with your employees, and now all of a sudden we get a bill, it's, the bill incorporates the new salaries that we pass, have to pass that on to the water customers. Okay, no, the department has to do that.
Alright, okay.
So future staff, I'm looking at this, it looks like Kevin's insur, uh insurance is a big portion of it, right, as a percentage? Almost a third, or maybe.
His salary, yeah.
Yeah, salary.
And his, and his, you know, his benefits.
Benefits and salary, right? Supposedly he'll be retiring soon, so that's going to be kind of a redo, a reduction in the overall cost, I'm assuming. You have to hire somebody new, right? But it will be at the same cost. I'm just trying to think down the road here, and.
I, I doubt it because when we have to hire somebody.
You think it's going to be as expensive?
It's going to be more money probably than what he's.
Yeah, okay, that's fair.
We're going to have to hire two people. We're going to have to hire a superintendent.
Yeah.
That has the credentials to do all the testing that we need to be done, and we can get rid of white water.
Yeah.
The majority of, that's a lot of cost for us. That's what we're planning to do. The second thing is that you get somebody with credentials, they're not going to do what Kevin's been doing.
Yeah.
Going around meter readings, changing meters, responding to emergencies.
Well, that's important, that's, well, that's good to know, because like, thinking about down the road, right?
Right, I mean, Kevin is just, Kevin has been just an outstanding person for the town because he does, he does it all.
Yeah.
We're not going to be able to do that when, when, you know, when Kevin retires, or tomorrow, Kevin could leave and go somewhere else. We're going to end up having to replace Kevin with two people. Somebody that's qualified to do the testing so we can save the money on the white water end, and somebody that's going to go off and read the meters, and.
Do the repairs.
Do the repairs. Most of our repairs now, uh, because we're, we don't, we only have one person, we have a big problem. We have to hire out. We have to hire, uh, most of the time we'll hire these entities to come in, and we have no other means of doing it. So, I mean, but where are that?
I hear you, that makes sense. Now, do you think that there'll be in the future, short future, I guess, a, a increase in customers? Because of, like, I know, like, you know, the thing about the, the over fifty-five communities being built on South Main Street, that's going to probably.
That will be one customer because it's not going to be broken out by individuals, that's going to be one customer. I remember having a meeting with the developer.
Yeah.
And uh, who else was there? Uh, the economic development people were there.
Mm-hmm.
And that, they're only going to be, they're going to have one main meter, so that's going to be one customer.
One customer with a lot of volume.
Yeah, yeah, it's going to go up, yeah.
Yeah.
It's not going to make.
That big of a difference?
Not make much of a difference.
Yeah, just fun, you know, just thinking about that. And then I wonder, like, with Copart starting, I wonder if they'll use a lot of water or not, because they'll, they'll be a customer, I'm assuming as well, right?
Yeah, we haven't heard anything what they're going to need.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure how water intensive that their, you know, operation is.
We, we never, we never know when we might lose Kevin.
Yeah, no, I, I hear you. I hear you. It's going to be.
Exactly, what is the number for the indirect costs versus the water cost? Do you have that?
I know the total budget um comes to like one point one four five million, and of that, I think nine hundred and forty-eight thousand is water purchase and sewer disposal. Is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah, it's a bunch.
Yep. And the current calculation for the um indirects prior to this meeting, excuse me, was ninety-three thousand, one twenty-eight.
How much?
Ninety-three thousand, one twenty-eight.
The sort of bulk, like seventy-five percent or so is the cost of the water?
Yeah.
So, yeah, with that project going on South Main Street, there's still fifty customers with around one meter fifty.
But yeah, there's going to be a draw. Most, most households with a couple of people in it, their bill is probably maybe around eighty dollars a quarter. You know, they don't, I mean, it's like in my house, my wife and I, we only use a lot of water.
Yeah, mine's a little over a hundred, usually right around a hundred.
You got kids right here.
I got kids.
When I have my sprinklers going, it goes way up in summer.
Well, I have sprinklers too, but they're all like, they're all like, well.
Yeah, I, I need to do that, actually. That reminds me, I do have a old well.
You should.
Yeah.
So just kind of a quick calculation based on what you said in terms of fifty custom, new customers, and eighty dollars a quarter, that ends up being about sixteen thousand of revenue that you would generate from that new project coming on.
Oh, of, of, of receipts?
Of receipts, correct.
But that's not profit?
Nope, it's receipts, yep.
And that's, that, that project is what, two years down the road now?
I mean, I think it's probably being delayed by the cost of construction right now, right?
Last time we met with her, with Debbie, that's what she said, she's holding on. Anyway.
That's where we stand.
Yeah. I mean.
Well, another way I'm kind of processing that, it's the charges that the town is charging back to you. That's a number that could be adjusted. I have a hard time with having other residents pay for water that someone else is using. That, that seems.
Do what you guys want to do.
I know, but I'm just giving an opinion, and it's like a response if you have one, I mean.
Who, who's paying for water that doesn't have water?
Well, if we subsidize, what I'm saying is, if we subsidize the charges that are being given from Fall River and New Bedford to us for the water that we use, right?
We're not subsidizing that at all.
No, no, I'm not saying we're subsidizing it now, but I'm saying part, the biggest part of your budget is to pay for the water.
Right.
Okay? And if we subsidize that amount of that charge.
What, are you talking, the indirect charge?
No, I'm talking about the direct charge for the water.
We're not asking you to subsidize that.
Yeah, I know, so I think so, out of what, you know, their profit is at the end of the year, and correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding of this is, what we're talking about is out of that profit, the town then gets allocated money for their overhead, right, for the, for the general stuff. So we're talking about reducing that amount that they pay for their overhead to the town for, you know, it's an accounting trick, right? It's just going from one pocket to the other, but.
That's what I'm trying to isolate and trying to make sure that we all understand.
Yeah.
That it's not paying for the water, for the product, but the parts that are being charged back for the town hall services.
Yeah.
That's it, that's the only thing.
Yeah, okay.
Or you could look at it saying the water customers were subsidizing the town departments by having to pay for their own accounting mechanisms and various things.
Yeah. Yeah, but I think it is fair, I mean.
It would because it's not something that goes to every single resident. So I think as, as a water user, I don't think I should be having George pay for it if he's not using it. So I'm okay with me paying that portion.
I don't think anybody has a problem paying for the water.
No, no, I'm saying the portion of the indirect cost, I'm okay with that, as far as, because I, I'd rather see it get put on me than the guy who has nothing to do with it. I'm at least gaining something from that, that service. They, they won't, so I, I will, so.
Yeah, but I think this could, just go back to Paul's point, it was like, that, most people who have water in town, it's not because they want it to, it's because there's some type of natural disaster of some sort.
The only people that have water in town that want, that want them to have it were the ones on Water and Pleasant Street.
Yeah, yeah, it's like, we can't have wells in the Bay Shores, right, really? I mean, you can, but not.
Not quality, not drinkable.
Yeah, you had wells before.
Yeah.
And then we had the storm, and that's when they get infiltrated with brackish water from the bay.
That's a good point. What if I, what if I put my sprinklers into my well and I, my well looks worse than it already does if it's all brackish water down there?
Well, that could very well be. Use a lot, use a lot of fertilizer.
Yeah. That, I, sorry, go first.
Just to clarify, sort of public more than anything else, what we're asking for is that the charges for the town employees that are uh involved with the water department, their part. I'm not saying this is clearly enough, but it's a fee that the town is putting on the water department for the services that the town hall employees do for the water department. But can I clarify that at all?
Yeah, that's, that's.
Well, it's a portion.
Just a portion?
Yeah.
Yeah, of course.
So it's for personnel costs associated with um my, the accountant's office, the audit that takes place, the treasurer's office, the computer system that's utilized by um those departments, as well as the water department, facilities, insurances, um, and then workers' comp, health insurance, and um unemployment, Medicare, and pension. So it's really a, plus general administration. So there's really a lot of components. It's not really just driven by folks at the town hall that support the efforts of the department.
A, a big chunk of that, though, is, for instance, health insurance is one item for any employee.
Yeah, that's about thirty-three thousand per year.
Right, so that, that's a charge that's not really reimbursing town hall, so to speak. That's a direct expense to, that, maybe that's the best way to say it, you have direct expenses, and then expenses that are being charged to you for the use of the town hall. But I'm not sure that we've broken, well.
Yeah, I think it is, so if you look at like, the group insurance, that's a hundred percent allocated, right? Whereas the, a lot of, you know, there are things that are percentages based on, and it's described how those are done, right?
Pension, the pension costs.
Yeah.
Allocated. I mean, that's just the normal way to do it, just that.
So, so just to be clear, these costs are being funded regardless, because they are funded through the general fund through the omnibus article at town meeting. So taxpayers, every resident as part of town, that comes to, you know, town meeting and lives in the community, it's part of that calculation of the omnibus. So this is just the mechanism to try and recoup some of the costs that are being paid out of the general fund for those that help support the operation of the water department.
Yeah, it makes sense, like, the square footage of the water office is, that's the percentage you have to use, like, you know, there's definitely.
Unless there's a creative alternative.
No, I know, I do, these are obviously, these are like the hardest things to figure out, right, to try to allocate. This is kind of cost accounting, allocate things, that looks difficult to do.
The method that Kim is using is perfectly sound.
Yeah.
So, I mean, going down that road a little further, it's, where I was going with this, is for instance, we're looking at the town treasurer's office allocation of almost four percent, which is eleven thousand dollars. So the question I would have is, if the town treasurer's office wasn't doing any of the work for your department, would her budget go down? It would be the same, right?
The budget would be the same.
So I guess where I'm going with that is, the water department isn't really incurring more cost to the town. So maybe we should look at that in some way, see what's really fair.
So just to, yeah, I see what you're saying, George, just to go back to the, the new way that this math would work, can you just explain that one more time, so it's a hundred percent clear on not basing off the total budget anymore, right, as a percentage? It's going to be based off of the amount of revenue, I guess, is it, that the?
You're, oh, you're asking me?
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, uh. The current calculation is as a percent of the budget for the current fiscal year. Uh, what I'm proposing is to replace budget there for the water and sewer commission by the portion of the budget excluding what they pay for sewage disposal and removal and water supply. So the percentage that's calculated uh would be based on a numerator that's reduced by about nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So their budget for that, for purpose of that calculation would be around two hundred thousand instead of one point one four five million.
Just because it's the pass-through fee?
Yes.
Makes sense, yeah.
So that percentage, which is currently three point nine three, would drop to about point seven percent.
But that, that's about eighty percent of our budget, so our.
Yeah.
Total thing should go down eighty percent.
No, because you, sorry, you have some direct, more direct charges, which are based on your employees for, you know, the pension, which is significant, um, and the insurance, that directly relates to your employees. So there wouldn't be an eighty percent deduction overall. Those are probably the two biggest items.
Yeah.
That, that um, the indirect costs are based on.
Those are really direct costs, we should really, we have to pay, no.
That's what you should say.
Yeah, 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 I think we're saying the same thing. So give any opinions on this that you'd like to share? Do you, do you agree with the Finance Committee's kind of new approach here, or, you know, just out of curiosity?
I, I think it's creative.
Okay.
And, and I, I certainly think as long as it's applied consistently going forward, that there, there should not be an issue.
Yeah, okay, as long as it, if it's logically sound to you, you know, at least, you know, it can work, right? And it's going to reduce your overall amount you pay, and the Finance Committee supports it, came up with it. I mean, I think that seems to be the path forward, at least try it out and see how it works for the next couple of years?
I mean, one, one further argument that I could add for changing this is that um if Fall River and New Bedford were to raise their water rates completely through the roof, you know, a hundred times what they are now, your budget would completely swamp the town's budget, and your indirect costs would basically cover a hundred percent of the town audit and the town treasurer's office and the insurances. And, you know, that clearly isn't fair.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, let's just hope that it doesn't happen, and if it does happen, then.
Well, the idea is to design a formula that eliminates that as a possibility.
Yeah, that's what you're doing, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that makes a lot of sense to me.
Now, can I interject something? I'm just coming from a different angle, because I play games.
Yeah.
And, and that is, so the rest of the town, including the people that have water, we're all town residents, we're all taxpayers. Now, we pay for it. Everything that goes on in the town, police, fire, town hall, you name it, we pay for it, right? Historical library, okay? But not that, not anybody uses those services.
Yeah.
Okay? Not everybody uses those services.
But they're available.
Well, the water is available to people that need it, who are forced into it, okay? And I'm not going to prolong the argument, I have my feelings about this thing.
I, I see what you're saying, like, every, no one's using the fires, the firefighters every day.
That's correct.
Right, but once in a while we need it, you know, it's the same kind of logic, I get you.
We're the only department, if we, if we're still considered a department, we're the only department in this whole community that gets hit with indirect costs, okay? And it's only because of the craziness of the enterprise fund, which we agreed to take the article off because you had very good reason for us to take the article off.
Yeah.
That's the point I'm trying to make.
Yeah.
All right?
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
And the bottom line is.
It is a unique situation, though, right?
It is very unique.
Yeah.
And the bottom line is that, you know, whatever happens, happens.
Yeah. So now, I don't think we, there's nothing to vote on here particularly, right, specifically tonight on this? I think we have kind of a consensus understanding of how to go forward here. It looks like historically, the. It looks like historically, there's just a memo that's signed by the board of selectmen, and I don't know if it's also...
Yeah, but you have to vote that you're changing, that allocate, the cost allocated.
We have to get that kind of all, you know, specifically right now, before we, before we vote on it, or if we vote on it tonight, like...
I think you could probably make a motion that encompass, you know, to vote to change the formula for allocation for indirect costs for the water, based on the finance...
It's based on the fact that the water is going based on what the finance committee...
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you may have, you may have an opportunity once we leave that, discuss it further. You may come up with a better idea, something that will reduce it a little bit more, that's what we're arguing. We're not a board of selectmen, you know? It can't be any easier than that.
When we interject, all three groups need to agree, come to a consensus. So if they're going to do something dramatic, you should be here.
Yeah.
They won't argue or take away that cost.
We won't object if they're going to reduce.
I don't think that's anything that you have to worry about.
Alright, so I guess, so with that, so all in terms of motion to, to approve the, or change the, the indirect cost calculation for the water sewer enterprise fund based on the finance committee's recommendations.
Motion made.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So with the finance committee, did you take an official position that this is what you want to do?
No, we didn't vote on it.
Okay, because I need a vote from you guys, and I need a vote from water and sewer.
Yeah, so I'll intitiate a motion to agree with, with the board of selectmen's, or do I need to state it more specifically?
Probably a little more... What your recommendation is. You know what your recommendation is, because we voted to go along with your recommendation.
Okay. So, okay, so I'm looking for a motion to recommend to the board of selectmen that, that the indirect costs that are currently calculated as a percent of the fiscal budget, fiscal year budget, exclude the cost of sewage disposal and removal, and the cost of purchasing water from the calculations that are currently used.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Adamus? Two out of three down.
I'm going to hold off my saw.
I, I think we should see the figures before we vote on it, until we see the figures.
I mean...
Okay, you're voting on a plan, you're not voting on a number. And the plan with the revision that the finance committee recommends, the current calculation would go down to seventy-four thousand, six forty-five, based on my spreadsheet.
Is that included five thousand that we're coming up with, special town meeting?
That, no, that would, there's no reason to, we're doing a reduction.
There's no reason that you can get that, that's going to, that article...
That should be, take, the motion to take no action.
If we should, yeah, okay.
I need a motion.
Want me to make it?
Sure, I want to.
Make a motion that we go along with the selectmen and the finance committee at this time.
Second.
Okay.
Any discussion? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 So done.
Beautiful.
Thank you, everyone.
So I will update the plan, I will present the spreadsheet to all coming parties, and then I will need your signatures, you'll get like a separate form if you can sign that, and you can get books together, but you've already done the voting, so it's just a matter of signing the form.
Can we get a bonus for this reduction?
Well, you're getting paid this year.
A huge bonus.
Yeah, two hundred. There you go. Alright.
Is that it? No, no, we have to, we should, can we talk about something else? Can we talk about the, the meter contract thing?
Oh, that's right.
So it's not on our, it's not on the board of selectmen agenda?
Oh, okay.
Unfortunately, and, people are watching, so I have to be careful. People are watching, so I have to be careful.
Okay. Make a motion to adjourn?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The pleasure is always, the pleasure is always.
At least we had a lot of fun.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do.
Alright, so we have two more, Jen and I'll...
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I think we can finish ours pretty quickly here. Thank you, everybody, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
You can give a call about that meter contract tomorrow.
Are yours?
Yeah, give me a call.
Are you good for next Thursday for the library thing, so I can...
Yeah, I should be able to go there, yeah.
See you, guys.
Thank you, see ya.
Thank you.
Take care, Paul. See you later.
Alright. So, next on the agenda is a discussion of vote on the transfer request from Mike McHugh for ten dollars due to an increase in fees for the Mass Moderated Association membership. I'll extend a motion to approve this request.
Motion made, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And third and finally, so a discussion of vote on this street and sidewalk opening permit for Tascow Construction for South Main Street, Route seventy-nine, High Street to Water Street for the sidewalk project, which we've all seen is already actually happening now, it's just a different part of it. So I'll extend a motion to approve this opening permit.
Motion made, second.
Alright, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, and with that, I'll intitiate a motion to adjourn.
Motion made, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.